Good evening and welcome to the August 24, 2017 Business Meeting of the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education. Please join me in rising as we salute our flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This is our last preschool meeting, pre-school meeting, and it is a packed agenda. So, all those people in the seats settle in and all those people at home enjoy the ride. I look for a resolution to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of July 6th and August 17, 2017.
So moved.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
For your information, the Treasury Report for June 2017 is now available in the business office. We'll move on to presentations and we're going to discuss the Audit Committee Charter. I know that we had a presentation or at least comment from the Audit Committee last meeting and these are recommended changes from the Audit Committee for the charter. Looks like minor changes to me.
Yeah, most of them are. The problem we had with the Audit Committee is when we had a committee of quote-unquote "the usual size" of like eight to 10 type of people, we always had conflicts and we sometimes did not get a qualm and that was one of our problems.
You mean scheduling conflicts?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, if you had it at certain nights, certain times during the day, you know, people can make it during the day and trouble at night, people could make it at night, couldn't make it these nights. So, what we thought to do, this is an advisory group, it takes no action, just advises. So, why not, instead of having a committee of eight, we can have more come to a meeting, but we just have five or so members. And that way it'll be easier for us to have a qualm so we can actually quote-unquote "conduct business." So, the first change we're going is saying that we're going to have a committee of say between three and five instead of the eight that we had before. So, that's the first minor change.
Ten minute wait.
Right above, right there. Okay, the big thing here, it just, as you see, it says, "And report any recommendations to the Board by the next meeting." No delays, but get you whatever we decide immediately, get you the information. And then, once a year, we decide how well we did or how well we didn't do. So, the key thing here is for now saying, "We will get you the material as soon as we have our meeting," you know, by the next one. And they meet about three times a year usually, the Audit Committee. So, it's not a major thing, but about three times a year we meet. Reporting, no.
Do you want to go back up?
Yeah, back up, there's just two words up on top.
There.
All decisions?
For recommendations.
No, keep going, keep going. Just above reporting requirements. Keep going, keep going.
There.
Oh. What am I missing? Okay. The order was changed or something was taken out of place.
Two words, "for recommendations" on the sheet.
Yeah. It was just, someplace when we get to recommend, that section that we talk about recommendations, basically as I said before, anything the Audit Committee says is in law, doesn't take effect, it's just a recommendation for the Board to act on. You know? So, all this is saying that, this is just saying common sense things, that the Board should, the Committee however, should let members join by video, by telephone, however we can get together just to make this work.
And the recommendation.
Oh, here it is. There it is. It just says, "All decisions are recommendations and it's only you people who actually make decisions and the majority of the Board, whatever it is, does it." And that's it. So, those are just minor changes to the charter. The biggest one is that we had trouble always getting a qualm and I was one of the biggest violators.
But the percent, the smaller percentage, you can...
It becomes easier.
Got you.
And it's still open to, you know, we can still have other people attend it.
Right, and they can put in, they can have input into the conversation.
All they want, because there's really, all we're doing is putting recommendations to the Board by the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Young lady in the audience, was that okay? I was talking to the young lady in front of you. I would've said the child in the audience if I wanted to, young lady.
Okay, great.
And what's going to happen is this will come up as a vote for us to actually do this.
The next meeting.
Yes.
And we move on to talking about District Facilities Committee and future planning.
Here tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about budgeting and long-range planning for the district before we get into our full-fledged budget season, which is coming up shortly, believe it or not. So, I just want to talk about how important it is, you know, to have a good balance in our financial versus instructional, you know, outlook for the year. And going forward, we need to observe all of our trends in spending, we need to track all of our revenues and expenditures, you know, make sure they're aligned every year. And, you know, you have to be careful, these things can get, you know, ahead of us in a short time, you know, by using fund balance, which is something, you know, the state is out there trying to get districts to do and it's still something we need to be very careful about and we need to take thoughtful planning. I mean, when the state comes out and they say things like that, "Use your fund balance," you know, "Get, you know, you shouldn't be putting this much or that much." You know, they don't know all the time, all of the factors that are involved in those things. They don't know what your assessed values are in your town, how they're trending, they don't know how your state aid is trending for your particular district based on your spending. So, those are easy statements for them to say, but it's important for us to look at them and keep tracking them with thoughtful planning. So, they, you know, those long-range plans provide clarity on the impact of trends. Again, like I just explained, the state comes up with new mandates all the time, those are not always spelled out for us, we don't know about them until the following year, the following year, so they all have an impact and it allows us time for planning. It provides information for supporting sustainability and managing changes in the district that happen here within our community. It provides a foundation for supporting the district's educational vision as far as their programs and their facilities go. And it provides a framework to support collaboration between the instructional leadership and the financial leadership. So, again, we're going to be updating, I'm going to be updating our long-range plan, our financial plan, year to year, keeping it current so that the district can align those things. We need to communicate that out, in other words, communicate it out to not only the community, but keep in communication with our superintendent, our educational leaders, so that they're all on this, we're all on the same page and trying to reach and attain the same goals. And again, to facilitate those updates, we need to make a lot of budgetary decisions and I need to make recommendations in order to address the priorities and stay within that plan. And one of the main reasons, you know, of course, for stability is to avoid those revenue and expenditure spikes. So, from year to year, you know, keeping things on an even keel with tax levies and state aid, knowing, you know, being predictable, what's coming in, what's going out. So, one of the things that we have coming up is some capital planning that we need to start thinking about. That's a very important piece of our expenditure, our budget every year. It's a, it's one of the expenditures in the budget within it that is, it's one of the larger pieces and it can really, if you have a lot of capital spending in one year or debt service in one year that you don't have in the next, can really make your budget fluctuate so much that your tax cap can be thrown off. So, it's important to look at the debt payments and the, and the building aid every year and try to keep those at an even rate throughout. So, we use and update our five-year capital plan to help make those decisions. We're aware of what needs will arise and by looking at that plan. And it's critical, again, to avoid that fluctuation in aid. When any kind of debt service drops off of our schedules, the aid also drops off and our tax cap is calculated based on the aid and on the amount of debt service that we have. In '21, '22, the district will see debt falling off of the schedule and that is going to be the ideal, now's the ideal time actually to start planning. It takes, you know, three to five years to complete a capital project if there needs to be one. We have to put, that's why we're talking about putting a capital planning committee together. It's not something you can decide, "Next year, we're going to do this and it's going to cost, you know, ten," it doesn't work that way. There's a lot of planning, there's a lot of state approvals that we need to go through, architectural things, if there's any kind of major construction that needs to be done. So, looking at size and space and program need, that's what we need to do. I feel that that's, we're at a critical juncture right now for doing that. And again, I had shown this, shown this in the spring and it is our debt service and it'll be in '21, '22 that we see a large portion of that coming off of our schedule and the key time is now to start looking at the future and deciding what our needs could possibly be at that point in time. Not only enrollment, but program and just need for opportunity for students and so forth. If anybody has any questions regarding that, but I thought that that would be a good place to start, get ready and set for our budget season and talk about the capital planning committee that we're hoping to put together. I think people have to show interest, whoever's interested in the community, in the, in the community, on the Board, on the staff, thinking about all of those people who would have an impact on making those decisions.
And we have sent something out to the community and we will continue to contact community members who may be interested. We've invited members of the CAC Committee to, to join, but we really want to reach out beyond that. So, we've sent out general email.
Right, and I think by the September 28 meeting, we should be able to...
Yes.
...appoint that committee.
Exactly.
Because, you know, we talked about it in July, I think pushing it off any further than that, you know, we need to get started.
We also communicated with the Town Council.
I think, yeah.
And I believe Mr. Ovario is interested in participating. That's also a very important partnership.
Right, and it can also create a shared services for...
Right.
...the district and the town, you know?
So, there are a lot of ways that we would like to get out to the public and I think this is where those listening tonight or watching tonight hopefully will contact us if this is something of interest to them. We have many more people on our email list than we used to have because of our outreach, but we still don't get to everyone and so it's really something that we would like to see. We'd like to see stakeholders involved to the greatest extent possible to understand what we're trying to do.
Right. Right, and something of interest that came out this week will be our tax bills. They're being sent out next week in lieu of the new school year. They'll all be going out by the end of the week. So, people I know are interested in some sense of getting them and knowing when they're going out. But some good news to report in Putnam Valley, the tax rate, despite our increase in the tax levy, because we never know what's going to happen with the assessments and I've said it over and over again, every year I never know, is it going to go up, is it going to go down? Well, our tax rate in the town of Putnam Valley is going to be going down 21 cents per thousand dollars of assessment, so that's good news for the Putnam Valley folks. There's a few parcels in Carmel that are also attached to the school district. They've had a revaluation this year, there's about 25 parcels. They're going to see, it sounds like a strange difference in their rate, it's like $18, it's like, you know, it doesn't mean that, it all depends on your equalization rate. So, that means nothing until they see their tax bill. And Cortland, similar changes. Their, their equalization rate is so out of whack because of the Indian Power Point plant. They have a very low equalization rate of 1.71, which is, it's very odd the way that they, they come to that calculation. So, again, their fluctuation is, can't be measured the same way that the majority, which is Putnam Valley, can be measured. And there'll be more news coming up on that as far as the Cortland rate goes because we've heard some news that the Power Point, the power plant might be dropping off of the tax rolls in the coming year. I think in the spring of 2018. So, I don't know exactly how that's going to affect all of us at that point in time, we'll, we'll get back to you on that. But I wanted to give everybody that news about the tax rate.
Jill, you said the school tax levy went down?
Our school tax levy did not go down, it went up.
Okay.
Did I say that?
No.
The school tax rate per thousand went down despite the fact that the levy increased slightly.
Right.
And I talk about that when I'm talking about the budget because I, even though I'm saying the tax levy's going up, it's an assumption that the rate is also going up and that isn't always the case. The assessed valuations have gone up considerably because of the, you know, the housing market has gone up. We've put $21 million back on our assessment rolls and it's caused the rate to drop. So, it can change unpredictably.
And so, what will that mean then within the tax bill that comes to mine and everyone else's house?
So, for an average home, an average home, about 335,000 is what an average home is in Putnam Valley. It's about a $75 savings.
So, it will actually, in what, the bill that comes to my house will actually produce a savings?
It will unless you've done some type of construction that's driven your assessed value up for any reason, but yes, that's true, if it's remaining safe.
Everyone should thank you a great deal for all your work, et cetera?
We, thank you, we need to thank everyone.
That's more great news about the tax levy.
It's a collaboration of work of all the people in the school district and our predecessors as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Because real estate is, is an issue, I mean, there's, all the, so many of the stories is that there's such a shortage of inventory...
Yep.
...for starter homes that, because people are not moving out or moving up into bigger, into bigger houses, so the, the market is really tight. There's actually, you know, lots of bidding wars happening on, on what inventory there is, which is a good thing and a bad thing at the same time.
Right.
But that's something, and with not a lot of development in the future of Putnam Valley for houses, it's going to be a tight market until people start moving.
Right.
Not that we're asking anybody to leave, I'm just stating the issue.
Yep, selling and buying and selling.
The, the five-year plan, a lot of the five-year plan, or I shouldn't say a lot of it, but some of it, of the projects that are in the five-year plan are actually going to be addressed as part of the Energy Performance Contract. A lot of those things that were on that list.
True.
A lot of that's going to be taking care of that. So, then we'll have to reevaluate what goes on there and then think about the future.
Yep, we'll have to reevaluate. In fact, last year, we, we also, you know, the Director of Operations, myself, we get together, we try to figure out what we can chop off that list when we can as each year goes by so that at that, there doesn't come a point where we have to do all of this at once.
And this, this long-range plan is, we're trying to get beyond the five years, right? We're trying to go to 10 and even 20 to see...
Right, well, we keep not, like...
See what the needs are going to be.
The last time we did the five-year plan was two years ago now. So, it was approved last year, it was actually done the year before, we're already two years into the five and, you know, we need to keep looking, looking out.
I guess the, we ran into it a few times in this past year. The most glaring example was the, was the later start time analysis. What, what we learned, one of the main things we learned from that was that we have a very tight athletic facility issue here...
Correct.
...that, that can be addressed as one of, one of the things to address on there. We also, as curriculum needs change, we've also found that our classroom use is very different than it was five years ago.
Correct.
And to assess, you know, how these things might, these needs might play out over the next 10 years, for me, it's exciting. I can't wait to be on the committee, so.
Good, good, so yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Science labs in particular, the science lab situation. We have many students who are attracted to science, who...
They need more space.
And you need to have, yeah.
The right kind of space.
Yep.
And that's, you know, what we've established, the school, when we started, I mean, again, we, the school only exists 15 years now, 17 years now, but it was our best guess of what we needed, right?
Right.
So, now we're looking to the next decade or two as to what we'll need for that and we're constantly trying to catch up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
There any members of the PTA, PTSA with a report? Let me move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Well, first of all, we'd like to introduce, make sure the community knows that we have Dr. Luft here, Dr. Jeremy Luft, who is our Director of Learning and Educational Innovation and Technology. And we've been very busy this summer since he started July 1st. He's joined our administrative team. We have another new member who is Nicole Mangieri, who is the Assistant Principal at the middle school. And we've been working as a team to, and also we have a new principal at our middle school, Travis McCarty. So, we've been doing a lot of team building and we've, we feel we are just raring to go for this year, very excited about all the possibilities. And Dr. Luft has already, you know, added his perspective, which is one that has been enriched by his work in other districts as well and his understanding of the interrelationship between curriculum and technology. And his thinking has already provided a new dimension to our discussions as administrators and it's, it's been very helpful. Today, for example, we did goal-setting and Dr. Luft facilitated that discussion so that we can be ready for the meeting with the community next week on Tuesday and the, and the Board Retreat. One of the exciting aspects of our work this summer has been the Sustainability Committee and group that started last year in, in response to the Board's request that we build a curriculum that would help students understand what the EPC is about. And that committee, which has really been assisted by Ms. Mangieri, who took a leadership role immediately and went to the Institute and with the, with the teachers involved, and they've started to do some, they're really excited about it. They started to do some great work and they came up with a presentation that we'll see at another time, but actually will be done for the Superintendent's Conference Day that we have coming up next week. And they came up with this sort of logo or idea theme, Sustain PV, Sustain PV. And the way we understand sustain is not simply to do with recycling or green, it has to do with the whole idea of growth and improvement and continuous change. And it's an exciting kind of theme and concept. And the next aspect of that, where we have Sustain PV and our first area for focus is building relationships. So, it's Sustain PV, building relationships. And that's what we're about this year, that's what we would like to be about as administrators and also would like to bring the district along with that theme. And so, everything we look at in terms of how we communicate, how we look at our curriculum work, everything is around this notion of relationships. For example, in the classroom, the relationship with the teacher and the student, we know is the, the crux of the classroom and how it works. The class, the culture in a school has to do primarily with relationships. The active learning model that we are looking at in the district, the IDE program, is about students collaborating and collaboration is the primary essential relationship of the educational program. So, we've been very excited about this process. And during the summer, we talked, we've talked a lot about this, but there are many other areas that we've touched on this summer that will become part of our themes. For example, the administrative team went to a coaching program at BOSI's and we discovered that the coaching relationship is the key to mo, to much of what we do in schools. The coaching of students, the coaching teacher to teacher, administrator to teacher. And that is again, what we are about and what we're thinking about. We joined in a Yale, the Yale Ruler Program, which is a way of looking at social emotional learning and helping students to recognize and evaluate and label their emotions and staff, staff and students. We know that the staff, the teacher in the classroom makes the climate, makes the weather. The relationship is what happens in that classroom and teachers will be learning how to assess their emotions and to prepare our classroom that is positive for students. We've also, again, as I talked about, had the Innovative Design in Education training. So, we are all about that this year, we're all in, in that area. What else happened this summer? Well, it was incredibly busy. First of all, because our offices are shifting, we've been sort of in a mode of traveling and we've understood some of those inconveniences, but we're very excited about a new place for the district office. We will, our Assistant Principal at the high school has been busy ensuring that we have our driver ed program back in September, which, which will occur. We've been assured by the state that we will be able to do that. We've had programs for students running at our elementary school, the ENL program, our students who speak English as a, as another language, they've had an incredible program and they did a presentation that is really exciting about the work they're doing. That will also be part of our Superintendent's Conference Day and, and a Board presentation in the early part of the year. We had the, our usual ESY program, which again was a very exciting program for the students with special needs. We have also had a Kinder Camp at our elementary school, we just finished that. We expect to have tomorrow or next, next week, I'm sorry, next week, our college essay class that we ran last year and running again, very well-attended. And we've, we've, again, we're opening up to our new, new year for actual implementation planning for the later start, which will be our initiative that will start next September, but this year will be the time that we build the schedule so that everybody knows ahead by December what will be expected when their children are going at that later time. In fact, at the elementary school, we are of a slightly earlier instructional start. In order to meet some of the instructional guidelines of the state, we'll be starting instead of 9:20 and Dr. Luft was very instrumental in that work as we worked through that. We, we're working on a more rigorous professional development plot process, again, with Dr. Luft's input and help, we've been thinking a lot along those lines. And we, we'll be working this year at the high school on the IB authorization aspect. We already have been accepted as an, as a candidate, now we have to have the authorization aspect, so it's quite an implementation project. Also, at the high school this year, we start our new schedule, our new modified block schedule, and we'll be monitoring that and looking at how that works. And as you can see, we've, we've been very, very busy and our new staff orientation, again, with a lot of planning work by Dr. Luft, that orientation program will begin next week and I will be introducing it. Ms. Doherty will be presenting all of the work on human resources and the work on special education. We have a special program for our teacher assistants that Ms. Doherty will be running. So, we're busy, we're active as you can see, and we're all about Sustain PV.
Hashtag.
Yeah.
Dr. Wilson, on the orientation, I remember in, near the middle of the end of last year, one of the Citizens Advisory Committee meetings, kind of, not necessarily went off topic, but what really went focused on attendance, because we talked about last year, a lot, attendance for students, attendance affects everything. And then the conversation turned into attendance is also really important for our employees, particularly our teachers. And so, that, I think that needs to be... And so that, I think that needs to be really hammered home, especially for new teachers, that, that there's only 180 days that we, we have, and every single one of them are important. And when we can minimize out of class time, even if it's, you know, to schedule a sub or for a meeting, that type of thing, it's important that we really have, the most important part is having a teacher in the classroom that's teaching the content. So I think that's just something that we need to make sure is an important part of.
Attendance is a critical aspect, and much of what we do when we think about, as leaders, we think about attendance, is how do we ensure that our environment is such that it is imperative that you're here at school with the students, that everyone believes that, everyone has that sense of purpose to understand, and that it is something that we pay attention to, and I think it's very important. Absolutely.
You mentioned the later start time, again, Dr. Wells. I don't want to muddy things as we head to the, this brand-new year, but I did run into some people in the community that said, were saying, oh, there's some discussion about maybe starting a little later next year, as though they weren't really sure whether it's going to happen. So is there some way that we can emphatically roll out the idea early on, so people will actually have one full year to adjust anything, they have to adjust about their schedule arrangements, one full year? So very soon after school gets started this year, that next September, we will have that beneficial later start time. Is there a way we can?
Well, one of the things we're going to do is bring together the later start committee again, have that, have another meeting to fill them in, and then report on that. And each time we have an inside Putnam Valley, which we're coming up with, we're going to be very strong on that. We will be getting things out regularly to make sure people know that it is something that we will be.
Will be happening.
I'm going to introduce you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wells. There are many members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items now would be the time. But if not, we will move on to new business.
Mr. Farrar, can we amend the high school club list to add the Thesbian Club?
Yes, is it amended now?
No. If you say it, then I'll have the attachment rectified tomorrow.
Basically, what we're saying, when we get down to consent agenda, item number 20 in the consent agenda talks about all the high school clubs and activities that we'll be having this year, and who's advising it, and how much the money. What we want to add is a Thesbian Society, which will be under the leadership of Jay Zupan and Gina Noda. So we want to add that to our list.
Okay.
So noted, we'll change it tomorrow, it'll be included, yes.
Okay, so then we will start with number one.
Ready. One. Whereas the annual audit conducted of the district's funds and accounts for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, has been completed, and whereas the board deems it necessary and appropriate to determine the funding of its Article II General Municipal Law and Section 365-1, 1A Reserve Funds, as referenced in a resolution dated June 23rd, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes the appropriation of monies from the general fund account of the district to increase the reserve balance in the Section 365-1A Tax Societary Reserve in the amount of $156,481 for judgments and claims that have been filed against the school district. Authorizes a decrease in the employee benefit accrued liability reserve, that's GML Section 6-P, in the amount of $393,231, and authorizes the placement of $461,464 into the established Capital Reserve, GML Section 365-1, 1, known as Building and Facilities Improvement Reserve Fund.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Whereas Amanda Tibbetts has been previously tenured as a teacher in a New York Public School District or Bosse's, and whereas said teacher has presented proof of receipt of a Section 3021-C or 3012-D education law APPR rating in the final year of service in their previous service in such school district or Bosse's, now therefore it be resolved, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, that the Board of Education hereby appoints Amanda Tibbetts to a three-year probationary term as a special education teacher, commencing on September 1st, 2017, and terminating on August 31st, 2020, in the tenure area of special education at the middle school on Step 2 MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Tibbetts holds pending certifications, grades, grades seven through 12, professional certifications for grades one through six students with disabilities and deaf and hard of hearing. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said teacher must have at least three years of effective or highly effective APPR rating pursuant to Section 3012-C and/or Section 3012-D of the education law during the probationary term that may count the rating of, from the previous employment as referenced above, and may not receive an ineffective APPR rating in the final year probation.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just letting the board know that Ms. Tibbetts is here, and that we're very fortunate to have someone with her background and experience.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Barbara Mulvey to a 26-week probationary appointment effective September 1st, 2017 through March 1st, 2018, extendable to September 1st, 2018, as a school monitor at the elementary school at Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Tashawn Mondello, a part-time nurse from the district, effective August 17th, 2017, as per document number 45/18, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved in recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Deborah Carpenter to a 26-week probationary appointment effective September 1st to 2017 through March 1st, 2018, extendable to September 1st, 2018, as a part-time school nurse in the district on Step 10 of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved in recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Natalie Doherty as the district's foster care point of contact for 2017-18 school year, at no additional compensation.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jeanette Mistrata as a Title VI officer for the district with no additional compensation.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Break.
Resolved in recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to appoint Karen Schmidt to a four-year probationary term as a speech therapist commencing on September 1st, 2017, and terminating on August 31st, 2021, in the tenure area of speech at the elementary school on Step 2 A MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Schmidt holds permanent speech and hearing handicap certification.
Second. Question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Resolved in recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the permanent promotional appointment of Gail Orfus to Senior Office Assistant with a 26-week probationary period effective July 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, extendable to 52 weeks through June 30th, 2018, on Step 6 of the CSEA salary schedule for employees hired after 20, July 1st, 2007.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
Resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the board hereby appoints Agata
Zumsky.
Zumsky to the position of tax collector, an exempt class position under the New York State Civil Service Commission, to serve a 26-week probationary term effective July 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, extendable to 52 weeks through June 30th, 2018, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a non-duration Terms and Conditions Agreement with Ms. Zumsky, as referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, as the document number.
Just leave it, I'm going to.
There is no document number at this time.
No.
Thank you.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11.
Resolved in recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Michael Ruffo from his position of school monitor, effective August 31st, 2017, and appoint him to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing on September 1st, 2017, and terminating on September 1st, 2021, in the teaching assistant tenure area, in accordance with the PVCSD Policy 9250, on Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule. Mr. Ruffo holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second. Questions or comments? Good for Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 12.
Resolved in recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the board appoints Kendo Muraz Coleman to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing on September 1st, 2017, and terminating on September 1st, 2021, in the teaching area, 10, in the teaching assistant tenure area, in accordance with the PVCSD Policy 9250, on Step 1 of the CSEA salary schedule. Ms. Muraz Coleman holds Teaching Assistant Level 1 certification.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Lynn Keller to a 26-week probationary appointment effective September 1st, 2017 through March 1st, 2018, extendable to September 1st, 2018, as an office assistant, school calendar, at the high school on Step 2 of the CSEA salary schedule, and resolved to approve up to three days of training for Ms. Keller at her contractual rate of pay prior to September 1st, 2017.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14.
Resolved to accept the resignation of Teacher Aide Christina Gamaro from the district, effective June 30, 2017, as per document number 28/18, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 15.
Resolved to accept the resignation of School Monitor Joanne Demersky from the district, effective July 16, 2017, as per document 2918, attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 16.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent School, of Schools to appoint Melissa Cifaro to a Point 2 FTE Instructional Support Specialist in Special Education, effective for the 2017-18 school year, supplemented by her 1.0 FTE tenured position in psychology.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 17.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the execution by the Board President and Superintendent of Schools of the 2016-17 APPR Implementation Certification Form, document number 2518, for its annual professional performance review for classroom teachers and building principals covered pursuant to Education Law Section 3012-D and Subpart 30-3 of the rules of the Board of Regents.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
18.
Resolved in recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to accept the bid and enter into a contract for food services in the district to Aramark Educational Services LLC, the sole bidder, effective the 2017-18 school year. Contracts referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, document 33/18.
Second. Questions or comments? I should a question. The change in the high school schedule with three periods instead of four or five lunch periods, are all those things in place as far as the additional?
Yes.
Eating areas and that type of thing?
Yes, that's all been organized, that was organized with the schedule.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 19.
Resolved to approve and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into an agreement with Putnam County Emergency Management Services for use of district facilities, document referenced in the official minutes of this meeting, as document number 39/18.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And we move on to the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items 2 through 22, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
I will go on, you guys can take a break for two hours if you'd like.
Um, I believe we, we talked about the amendment, is that?
So we're approving a health and welfare contract with Tarrytown School District for three of our students who attend school there, and for one student who goes to Yonkers. We're approving CSE and CPSC placements. We're approving the company PAS to provide driver ed training for our students. We're approving, my notes. We're approving a consulting agreement with Ridman Foxhall to provide occupational therapy services for the school, Mercy College to provide central auditing, processing evaluations, Theracare to provide parent training, occupational therapy and physical therapy and other related services, and interim healthcare to provide nursing services. We're approving summer hours for the substitute clerical staff. We're amending the summer pay rate for one employee because that person had prior experience and we didn't take that into consideration, we, we hired her originally. We're approving the summer ENL staff, teachers, three teachers and the clerical support. We're paying the staff for Indicator 13 Self-Review Audit. We're accepting a donation of a summer reading program from USAF Incorporated. We're disposing of out-of-date textbooks, textbooks which are past their prime. We're appointing a sub, a nurse for the high school, we're appointing a fitness room leader. We're, we're accepting or approving graduate credits, enhanced longevity in-service courses for our, our staff. This is work that our teachers have done, we're approving that. We're appointing additional four, four coaches. We want to mention that Matt Mel is a volunteer football program, and he continues to do that, and we're appointing a head JV soccer coach, girl soccer coach, head modified girl soccer coach, assistant varsity boy soccer coach, and a JV assistant coach, and lifeguard for girls swimming. We're accepting athletic training services provided by Proclinks Socio-Physicotherapeutic-Chiropractic Wellness Company. We're approving days without pay for some employee, for an employee who, who had to take a leave. We're approving salary adjustments, enhanced longevity, graduate course credits, in-service courses for our people. We approve, oh. We, she, he comes down and he's in there, and we, we do know who that is. We're approving club and activities advisors for the Hill, 43 clubs, we're approving altogether. That's for the high school, we're approving all that. We're approving a contract for bigger security forces to provide us, we're approving additions to our substitute to the list.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We don't know the time for comments. It's a lot of new business.
No, it's right there. Now's the time for public comment on any item.
Okay. Just the one quick one that we want to have is that there's a special meeting of the Board of Education on Tuesday, the 29th, this coming Tuesday. We'll be meeting to go over some of the goals and things. And this is a follow-up of what citizens have said prior to us and what faculty and staff have put together. So, we will have this special meeting on the 29th.
Board retreat.
Yes.
If there's nothing else, we need to... I resolve on the recommendations of Superintendent of Schools convene executive session for one matter of pending litigation. No business will be conducted afterwards.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Farewell. Salute.